Start Monday, July 13. Let the record show we do have Court Commissioner Peña being absent. Everyone will please stand for the question.
The Republicans of the United States of America and to the Republic of the Constitution stands one nation under one law in the business of the Constitution.
Do we have any public comments?
Yes, sir.
We don't?
The one I agree with, Judge.
Oh, okay. Okay, Mr. Ramírez?
Yes, thank you, Judge. Good morning, Judge.
Good morning.
Thank you for having me here this morning. I just wanted to address the court very briefly with reference to a couple of the items that I saw on the agenda. I got a copy of the agenda last week. Item number 18 and number 27. I've spoken to most all of you that are here with reference to at least item number 18. I am very wary of any kind of action that involves the transferring of property from the DA's office at this point in time, at this point in the year, to any other entity. I don't know anything about the F-450 that Mr. Escobar asked to be able to donate to Commissioner Peña. But I'm assuming, and maybe I'm assuming incorrectly, that this is a vehicle that was probably forfeited. Either way you cut it, if it's a vehicle that belongs to the DA's office, then I think this is probably not the right time to be giving away property in view of the fact that we're going to have a change in that office on January 1st. If it's a forfeited vehicle, which I'm assuming it probably is, then the donation of that vehicle to a commissioner is clearly illegal under Chapter 59.06 of the Code of Criminal Procedure. And I did forward that code, that chapter, to a couple of you all for review. It's clearly illegal as a layperson, an attorney, I know that it's illegal. I'm assuming that Mr. Escobar should know that it's also illegal. Even with the approval of the Commissioner's Court, he cannot donate a forfeited vehicle to any entity unless that entity is involved in law enforcement. And so it bothers me that this type of item is on the agenda because, quite honestly, I believe that both of these gentlemen should know better. And that bothers me. So I ask the court to be careful with any actions that are taken with reference to this type of request because even though your local, your counsel is not here to advise you, I can advise you in my capacity as an attorney and after having done some research that this is clearly an illegal request if this is a forfeited vehicle. If it's not a forfeited vehicle, then it's clearly just an attempt to dispose of DA's property that really shouldn't be disposed of at this point in time, in my opinion. With reference to item 27, that's a very vague item. I understand that I'm new to the Commissioner's Court's agendas and I know that those items are put on the Commissioner's Court agenda in a very specific way. This is a very vague item. I have no idea what this involves. I'm assuming this involves the movement of monies around within the department. I would ask the court to be very careful about what kind of amendments and movements of monies within the DA's office are made. As you all know, we had a very, very embarrassing and almost humiliating incident with Haida in this county. Unfortunately, my understanding is that one of the investigators that was working for Haida has been picked up by the DA's office now as an investigator. I don't know whether or not that is proper. I do know that at this point in time with the COVID and the fact that there's very little investigative work being done at the DA's office, that this is probably money that's being spent that shouldn't be spent. This is taxpayer money. Hiring another investigator at the DA's office right now when nothing's happening really at the DA's office with reference to investigations is clearly not necessary. I don't know what item 27 involves, but I would ask the court to be very careful and to be very vigilant as far as what is being requested by the DA's office and how this money is going to be spent or moved around. It may be something very innocuous that I'm not aware of, but I would ask the court to look very carefully at each and every movement the court makes with reference to the budget at the DA's office and especially with the reference of transfer of property from the DA's office to anybody else, especially if that property is forfeited. Obviously, no property from the forfeiture fund or that was forfeited can be transferred to another entity unless it's for law enforcement purposes. And that's Chapter 59, Section D1 and D2, 59.06, D1 and D2. And finally, with reference to something that I discussed with a couple of you, we are continuing to have, or are continuing to have, a large problem with getting information about our forfeiture fund. And quite honestly, I feel like I've gotten a lot of lip service from people telling me we'll get you that information, we'll get you that information. To this day, I have no information about the DA's forfeiture. This is something that I believe you're entitled to know as Commissioner's Court and as leader of this county. I think you're entitled to know what's in the DA's forfeiture fund as well as what's in the county attorney's forfeiture fund. I've met with a few of you before. I've been told I'm going to get that information. To this date, I have not gotten the information. So there is a very good chance that on January 1st, we may find out there's zero in that forfeiture fund, which will jeopardize programs and agencies like Haida. So I ask you once again to please ask Mr. Escobar to give you the forfeiture account and to let you see the forfeiture account. You're entitled to see it. You should see it. The taxpayers deserve to know what's there. As an incoming DA, I deserve to know what's there. And I don't think that the DA has a right to hide the forfeiture fund from county officials. So I'm here to ask you to please make an effort, maybe a stronger effort than has been made yet, to find out what's in that forfeiture fund. And I think that forfeiture fund should be audited once a year. I believe that's what the law says. I think the Commissioner's Court can do that audit. And it's not a complicated audit. It's just a matter of looking at the numbers. So I would ask that you look into that. Maybe you speak to Mr. Canales about the legality of getting into the forfeiture fund if Mr. Escobar refuses to cooperate with you. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Judge. Good morning. Let me address. Going to item?
I'm sorry?
Going to 18 or 27? Anything will pass?
Yeah, let's go ahead and go to item number 18 of the court. Mr. Ramírez, thank you for coming by and talking to us and advising us.
Thank you.
On number 18, I did talk to Commissioner Peña and I told him that I felt at this time it was not right to be transferring anything. So he said he was all right with it, you know, he could wait or he could, I mean, he was not adamant about getting that piece of equipment. So for item 18, I'm going to recommend that we don't approve that.
I should.
Do you need a motion?
I need a motion, yeah.
I'd like to move now.
Second.
Move the second discussion. All unfair, please. Aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries.
Or denied, Judge.
I'm sorry?
Motion denied.
Motion denied, yeah. Item 27, that, I don't know. It's a budget amendment. Mr. Perez, can you say something, Mike?
Yes, good morning, Judge. Good morning. I don't know the particulars of it. Obviously, my staff is the one that go over these amendments as my understanding is that their amendment is correct. There's nothing wrong with it. It's just a matter of amending from one line to another.
But do we have a copy of the amendment?
You all should have a copy of it. I don't have a copy.
Tell me anything. Yeah, I think this is a request for a line 9 transfer from office supplies for $605, is what he's transferring. Is that correct?
From office supplies to what?
Oh, no, no. That's Omar Montemayor.
Yeah, I have a different one here.
I said it here. What's it?
I just saw him.
Start the back.
Yeah, he's moving from assistance, moving that money to secretaries. And it's $1,500. And yeah, this is his county budget. It's a line 9, 100.
It's within his department.
Yeah. Yeah, that one, I think that's okay.
You could come over that, Mr. Ramírez?
Yes, I can.
It's $1,500.
Yes, I can change.
Okay, and then on the other side, I'm sorry?
Do you want to sell it?
Yeah. On the other one, on the information for the forfeiture funds, really, you know, I can send him a letter and see if that works. And I'm going to be very candid and the commissioners are aware of the situation. Some years back, a couple years ago, we wanted to get information on the forfeiture account. So it was very, like pulling teeth, we couldn't get anything. So what we did, we got a court order, a forensic audit, and we hired an auditor so we could get information. And Mr. Escobar wouldn't give the forensic auditor any information. So we kept going back and forth. So I asked the auditor, what is it that we can do to force him to give us the information? And he said, talk to your district judges, you know, they can mandate him to do it. Well, and again, the court is not a witness. We did that and at that time, Judge Garza, Alisa Garza, came into executive session, if you all remember, and she was, I mean, really upset, saying that we were on a witch hunt and all this stuff, and we're not. We're just trying to get information that, like you said, that we should have. So making a long story short, it all fizzled out because we were never able to get any information. Now, the only information that I think we could get is from the auditor, whatever information you have as far as how much money is there, how it has been spent, this sort of thing, unless we go again and try and get a forensic audit. You know, because it is, it is very discouraging, you know. The district attorney, the county attorney, you know, I have no knowledge of their forfeiture funds. And that bothers me because I should. If I'm responsible for it, I need to know. The sheriff is pretty good. He does comply. But the other two, I have problems. The court might want, it's not an agenda item, just answering Mr. Ramírez, but maybe at some point in time, we might want to ask for another forensic audit to get that information. It's up to the court. It's going to cost a little bit of money, but I think it's well worth it.
You don't have a lot of information?
If I may, I know Lethy has put some files on my desk or on my side table. I don't know exactly what all the information we have. I don't believe that we're getting resistance on getting that information. I just haven't looked at it. So I'm not sure how current we are on those bank statements, but I know I have gotten some of the good information.
Okay, I guess we do need to get that information at some point. And I know right now, you're with Scott and crew and all that, but Mr. Ramírez is right. I know he's told me twice, he's called me in for that information and I've told him, yeah, we'll get it, we'll get it, and we have it.
I know we were waiting some on the county attorney that Brenda was trying to get to us, and I think she was trying to reconcile the accounts before she got it to us. I told her, don't worry about the reconciliations, just get us the bank statement. We'll worry about that later. So I know she's in the process of getting that. Again, I don't know exactly how current we've gotten, but we do have some files on my desk.
Well, we need to get it, and if for some reason there's some resistance, let us know. There are other ways of getting it.
Yeah. But like I said, I don't think we've gotten resistance.
Well, but...
But then I'm not sure exactly where we have, once I find that out, then we'll find out if there's resistance or not.
Any other comments, Judge?
Judge, Mr. Ramírez, anything that comes out of the agenda, come and get to Commissioner's Court, though.
Thank you very much.
You got five and I have more, Judge.
Mr. Perez, how much of that information do you have?
They don't know. That's what I don't know. I know I've got some files on my desk. I haven't looked at them. I'm not sure exactly how current we are. Is it just through year end 19, which we get every year, or if they went ahead and gave us right now?
But when you come to the forfeiture funds or those Chapter 59, you have, you have all that paperwork yourself?
We should get it. We normally get it for the audit. Basically, the thing is that right now, we're just working on the year end 9/30/19 audit. And that's why I'm saying, they may have given me up to 9/30/19 and nothing from there on, or maybe they did give you us.
The problem, however, is that we don't have control over those money, but when something wrong happens, shit's going to fall on the Attorney's Court, not on there. That's what happened.
Yeah, we'll review that. But in fact, during executive session, I'll run back out there and see exactly.
You know, and if you have any ideas, Mr. Perez, as to how we can make this more efficient and more fluent, let us know.
If the accounts are with Lone Star, which they're supposed to be, then I don't see any reason why we couldn't go straight to Lone Star.
Yeah, we can get it now. My understanding is that there's one account that's in some of the bank.
Right.
You know, we've been through this before. I don't think that's correct or legal. We have a depository. Everything should be in a depository.
We need to transfer the money, Judge.
I'm sorry?
We need to transfer it.
Yeah, yeah, I totally agree, you know, Perez.
But what actually do we need to take?
Well, that's where...
No. Maybe we're next, but like we need to...
Yeah, okay.
What's that, Judge? On what portion is that?
Well, again, I don't want to say something that I'm not completely sure.
Okay, that's all right. We'll talk about it. I know what you're talking about.
But it is very concerning. Like Commissioner Alvarez says, you know, they want to control everything and that something goes wrong and we're responsible. We need to come up with a word. We need to come up with a, that bothers me a lot. But anyhow.
So, Mr. Ramírez, before you leave, any, no vehicles or anything should be transferred to any entity other than to be used for law enforcement?
Commissioner, from what I understand, under Chapter 59.06, any forfeiture, any property that was subject to forfeiture cannot be transferred to another agency unless it's for law enforcement purposes by the DA.
That transfer in a vehicle to present 3, 2, 1, or whatever, it's illegal.
That's illegal.
What would that forfeit, Mr. Ramírez? We talked about some property.
Right, I think, I think that's, I think that's also problematic, but I don't know if that was forfeited property or not. I'm assuming it was. But if the federal government is going to condemn that property regardless, then I'm sure there's a way to get around it.
Yeah, what I talked to Mr. Ramírez about was some property that is under the district attorney's office. However, the, that's where the wall of the world was going to go when the federal government wants to negotiate. And as you all are well aware, the only ones that can enter into a contract is my signature with the approval of the court. So it needs to fall back on us so that we can negotiate with the federal government.
I think that's where your counsel comes in, Judge, Mr. Canales, to give you some advice, legal advice on how that can handle.
Obviously, that needs to be coordinated with the DA's office and with your counsel. And don't say, what are you trying to say, Judge, to make on Mr. Ramírez, permission? Any property that has been confiscated and sold or have to have the approval of you and the Commissioner's Court?
No, no, the, any contract. See, and the thing about...
It's a law, no contract.
Yeah, the federal government needs to enter into a contract.
That's what I'm saying, Judge.
And that has to be us.
That's what I'm saying. But let's say I confiscate a house or Mr. Ramírez confiscate a house, and he wants to sell it up, sell it. Does it have to come through us?
No, no, because that's not a contract, you know. He sells it at an auction, or he can sell it, and whatever revenues come in from that that goes to him under the forfeiture account. But that money can only be used for law enforcement or having something to do with law enforcement.
And if you don't mind, it's actually the donation part that's problematic. It's the donation, giving it away, is the problem.
Okay, very good.
I want to thank you all for listening to me. Thank you very much. Have a good week.
Go back to the, let's get the agenda for Mr. Lopez here, what I'm gonna do.
What?
You guys need a deputy here.
21.
21, okay. Yeah, let's go on to item 21. This is discuss and take action on the record service rotation.
Yes, yes, Your Honor. I have been approached in several occasions the last time he can come up. Mr. Lopez has stated to me that, well, complained about the fees that they pay and that they don't get enough, they don't get equal opportunity to get on the rotation. Apparently, he claims that, they say that he gets called to a record service, maybe 20, 10 minutes, 15 minutes, they call him up and said, no, we want to cancel, or whatever reason. And then all of a sudden, some other regular picks it up and they go, place back on the, on the end of the list. And he's got a problem, apparently, according to them, what he's saying, that a lot of vehicles have been driven by the Sheriff's Department and that they're, that he thinks that it's, they're losing out of business because, you know, they're not getting the calls. So they go, look, I think you need to come before the Commissioner's Court and explain to them and get the deputies in charge of the rotations or in charge of who's doing what so we can clear up this thing because this has been going on for one or one...
For years.
Okay. Will you take a step?
There's another people, Judge. There's another people that...
Give it up, switch it up.
First of all, thank you, Mr. Lopez, for bringing me here. And about the record service, Mr. Your Honor, they put me on rotation. I paid for the permits. And there was people that were calling me, did I have the people? And I didn't have that vehicle. That vehicle was a TJ record service. TJ record service does not exist. He doesn't believe that record were working. TJ has Bolivares, TJ can start in the same door, and they're using three rotations. That's not clear. Crowley has one breaker, two records down, GPS lives here to come up. Now the church put them on. I don't know why. That's another issue. I called Mr. Ramírez at West Lico. They were complaining that I had that vehicle. So I called West Lico with Mr. Ramírez in charge of the rotations. He told me that TJ had that vehicle, the white pony. That breaker was taken off last year because he's a John. It's not working. Yeah, but GPS does not take care, this is county level now. Okay, there's no problem with that. Well, there's a problem now. Then I called Mr. Black, told Mr. Ramírez, can you check me the rotation because we paid permits to the state and to the county? And he said, Mr. Lopez, you're only on the east side. And I paid for rotations on the east side and west side for three records. You know, there's a receipt there. You can see it. So why was, I was not on rotation? So I talked with Charlie, Mr. Ramírez called, Mr. Trevino, Mr. Trevino didn't answer the phone. So Mr. Ramírez called me back and he said, go talk with the sheriff. I talked with Charlie, he's a good friend, and I told him, Charlie, what's going on? I don't have nothing against the county, nothing against you all. I just want to make legal. If you can see the 1099, that's what I heard last year. Oh, you're wrong because they robbed the vehicles. They give us one or two tolls every three months. It's not fair. Paying permits and not getting in rotation. Do you think so? Is there?
And I understood...
That's why I'm here.
And I understood that, and while back ago when we asked about the permits, remember, a lot of those record services had not paid up until we brought it back on, and they were still on rotation based on him.
Another issue, Judge. About two years ago, three years ago, I went to turn in a ticket to the Sheriff's Department. They told me, this ticket is paid. Do you tell me who got this check because I don't have it? I got the check from county, I make a copy and stuff, and that check should go to my account because our business account, you can add the deposit on any account. The lady there told me, here's the copy, but he doesn't say nothing. But I'm going to a bank, can you go with me? I went to a bank, I'm sorry. And the lady there said, Mr. Lopez, he doesn't say here. What do you mean, doesn't say? The bank is not paying, but the bus, if you deposit your check, they should have, who the who catch the check, don't you? And more if it's a commercial, commercial business, commercial check. So they were talking there and there, and he said, oh, I heard, because I was outside there, I heard that he said, oh, this check was a bus and a, and a bus firework. And I was sitting there in the office, and the lady came out and said, Mr. Lopez, at what bank you deposit your check? He got traced. He went in back and then they called. Mr. Lopez, this check was...
That breaker was taken off last year, because this is John, it's not working. Yeah, but DPS does not take care, this is county level now. Okay, there's no problem with that, well, there's a problem now. Then, I called Mr., like told Mr. Ramirez, can you check me the rotation, because we pay permits to the state and to the county. And he said, Mr. Lopez, you're only on the east side. And I pay for rotations on the east side and west side, for three records, you know, there, there are the receipts there, you can see them. So why was, I was not in rotation? So I talked with Charlie, Mr. Ramirez called, Mr. Trevino, Mr. Trevino didn't answer the phone. So Mr. Ramirez called me back, and he said, go talk with the sheriff. I talked with Charlie, which is a good friend, and I told him, Charlie, what's going on? I don't have nothing against the county, nothing against you all, I just want to make a living. If you can see the ten ninety-nine, that's what I heard last year, oh, you're wrong, because they robbed the vehicle. They give us one or two tolls every three months. It's not fair. Paying permits and not getting in rotation, do you think so? Is there?
And I understood.
That's why I'm here.
And I understood that, and while back ago, when we asked about permits, remember, a lot of those record service had not paid up until I, we brought him back on, and they were still on rotation based on him.
Another issue, Judge, about two years ago, three years ago, I went to turn in the ticket to the sheriff's department, they told me, this ticket is paid. Do you tell me who got this check, because I don't have it. I got the check from county, I make a copy and stuff it, and that check should go to my account, because our business account, you can add the deposit on any account. The lady there tell me, here's the copy, but he doesn't say nothing. Yo, but I'm, I'm going to a bank, can you go with me, yes, when I, I want to bank, I'm sorry. And the lady there said, Mr. Lopez, he doesn't say here, what do you mean, doesn't say? The bank is not paying, but the bus, if you deposit your check, they should have, who, who catch the check, don't you? And more if it's a commercial, commercial business, commercial check. So they were talking there, and then he said, oh, I heard, because I was outside, I heard that he said, oh, this check was a deposit on, on the firework. And I was sitting there in the office, and the lady came out and said, Mr. Lopez, at what bank you deposit your check? He got chased, and went in back, and then they called. Mr. Lopez, this check was a deposit on Chase. Chase, yeah, but not on my account. So what happened with that check? We need to make a little research, I will, next week, ask them. We don't know, Mr. Lopez, you need to talk with the sheriff, they need to open investigating.
Are you trying to say?
They, they do something that I don't like to, is that we send the tickets, we turn in the tickets, they don't pay you every month, they pay you, they, they pay you one ticket, the other tickets, they let them two, three months, and then they pay you.
Who's they?
Sheriff Department. And that, that ticket was lost, and I, I told Marty that time. He said, Marty, go talk with Charlie, I'm not going to do nothing, let him go, two hundred dollars, don't worry about it.
But who gets that check?
That was one of the issues that I had about three years ago.
Who gets the check?
I don't know, they didn't tell me in the bank. They didn't tell me, they, they said, they, they don't know, they don't know, they don't know. Who did? I don't know.
But it got to you, and it wasn't deposited, and you, you didn't get the check to your plate?
I got all the copies, I got the firework, got the copies, but I got the copies of the checks, when you deposit the check in the bank, you can get the copy of the check.
And these tow vehicles, only from the sheriff's department or DPS and Borupi Chong?
The what?
The tow vehicles that.
DPS and county, DPS and county, this is. Yeah, yeah, because now DPS, if, if you're not on the rotation with DPS, with the county, they don't call, they don't put your rotation on DPS.
And who pays DPS?
Hmm?
DPS pay their own?
DPS?
Yeah.
What do you mean?
No, para la gente, no.
No, para la gente.
But, but the rotation for DPS is, is done by the sheriff's department or by them?
If the sheriff's department, like your, your workers tell me, if you don't pay today the permit, you're going to be out of rotation plan, sheriff's department and from DPS. So we want to pay, another issue, sir. Mr. Ochoa has years not paying the permits, and he was unrotationed.
Okay, let me, let me just, you know, covering a lot of things, and I need to answer some of them.
Okay.
First of all, as far as the sheriff's department driving vehicles to, instead of calling the wrecker.
They can drive the vehicles, there's, there's no problem.
Let me finish, let me finish. We, we discovered, we discussed this many years ago, in this room. The county is, and, you know, we're trying to save money, taxpayers' money, and if we can drive a vehicle, we're going to drive it, we're not going to call a wrecker.
I understand.
You know, we're, we're going to drive it, because, you know, that is, we're, we need to be future with our money. Okay, now, the, the DPS, the last time you and I talked, you told me that DPS on the Ochoa situation, that when you looked into that, that DPS said that they do their dispatching of records from West Lico, and the sheriff had nothing to do with that.
Yeah, but they use the list from the sheriff's department. Sheriff's Department need to send the list of the rotation from Sheriff's Department, because they're using the same list over there. If you're not here, you're not going to be over there.
If that's the case, and the sheriff sends them, and Ochoa's not on the rotation, and DPS calls Ochoa, that's a DPS problem, not ours, they shouldn't be calling you. Now, some of, we have, yes, sir?
Yes, sir, the rotation actually comes from the planning department, they're the ones that charge the permits, not us.
And the planning department?
The department gives us the rotation, that's what we have. They give, they give us, they give us a list of fifteen records, that's what we have right now, sixteen on the east and sixteen on the west.
Well, I was not on the west. I was not on the.
But, but let me, let me, let me just correct that, the, the planning department issues the permit.
Yes.
We have nothing to do with the rotation.
Yeah, but they gave us a list of the.
The people that can be on rotation.
And then we do the rotation based on the list that they gave, they gave us.
But Mr. Ramirez call you last week?
Yes, and we sent them the list last week.
Yeah, because now I'm on rotation.
Yeah, he called me last week, and I, I emailed him the list that we have now.
Yeah, I talked with, with Charlie about that, that issue. Another issue, we don't have any problem that they got the vehicles, Judge, but there's another issue. DPS call us, rotation DPS, we're there. The sheriff's department stepped by there, hey, give us a car, and I, okay, no problem, give him the car. Hey, hey, we're going to put you back on rotation, DPS don't put us back on rotation as the vehicle is driving, so we lose them, we're losing money there, we're losing rotations. Because a lot of times DPS don't put us on rotation.
Well, I thought, I thought the sheriff was a wonderful, calling the rotation.
Hmm? No, no, no. The sheriff calls, and they call us from DPS, if DPS call us for a traffic, an accident or whatever, like, like yesterday or the day before, we pick up a vehicle at the Escobares. Okay, and then I pick up the vehicle, and he told me, I need to call the sheriff's department, because he was saying, okay, no problem. And then he said, you know what, TJ, take it to your yard, and then, the sheriff, the sheriff's department wants the vehicle, they're going to drive the vehicle, but what happened with us? Sometimes we pay a driver to go over there, stay there, and then, I know we're going to drive the vehicle, disregard it. I have issues that I have been almost at La Gloria, and they answer me at Sheriff's Department, hey, disregard, we don't need the wrecker anymore, the vehicle just started. And what happened with my keys, or what happened with my driver? Yes, you can see that ten ninety-nine, that was what we made last year, one thousand nine hundred dollars in a year.
Judge, in what way does the county save money by driving a vehicle?
You don't have to pay.
They don't have to pay the wrecker?
No.
But I thought, I thought that the owner of the vehicle pay owner, no?
Well, if, if we confiscate the vehicle.
Confiscate?
Yeah.
Okay.
Then, then.
Confiscate.
Yeah, and, and.
I thought it was accidents and something like that, DWI.
I don't know that word.
No, no, we're talking about the vehicles we take to our yard, so when we confiscate.
Confiscate.
The ones that are for rest, the records take over.
I thought it was the arrest, no, confiscate.
The ones we take to our.
The arrests are taken up by the wrecker.
The ones for, they're for rest, the records take over.
So you, you, you drive confiscate, no, that makes sense.
But what about stolen vehicles?
The stolen vehicles go to, go to the records.
Because sometimes they go to your yard.
Depends if there's an investigation on it.
The stolen vehicles go where?
Depends if there's a, be an investigation on it, sometimes they go to our yard, but majority of the time they go to the record yard.
Make change. So, so I guess, from what I hear, there's a, I guess, loss of communication between DPS and us. That's a major problem, no?
Yeah, DPS is using your rotation.
Well, when, when you say using our rotation, he uses the records that we have certified can do work here.
Yes.
But they call the rotation.
They have their own rotation, but they use the same rotation. If you have the rotation here, how do you have the rotation here, it's over there, they use the same list.
Yeah.
But I just want to say.
And if you're not on rotation in the county, they don't put you on rotation like they did.
Maybe something really simple, like upgrading the list of.
Yeah, and, and we did, last time, last time, Mr. Lopez was here, you know, we, we got on it, we, we updated the list, and, and it should be done every year, wasn't it?
There's sixteen.
How many quarters?
Sixteen.
Sixteen?
Okay, sir.
I don't know, guys, can you?
Yeah, and, and they, they get permits from the east and the west.
Yeah, but it, but, yeah, judge. Third chance for everybody.
I thought, based on what you told me, I thought that the county was in charge of doing DPS rotation and everything, now you're telling me that DPS calls?
No, the county, the DPS uses the list of the county.
Right, you understand that.
And the rotation of the sheriff's department, you're, they don't put you on the DPS.
Yeah, but, but. What I'm saying is that if DPS doesn't have an upgraded list, was it going to work with what they have?
No, they, they work with the list of the sheriff's department, but they, they call us from West Lico.
Okay, well, DPS calls his rotation, he's got there.
Yeah, yeah.
Who's next, who's next?
Yeah.
Sheriff Department don't have to do anything with that.
No.
Sheriff Department just calls his own call, and he gets the rotation.
Yeah, and, and really, see, that's because we're, we're, we're using rotation when we mean the, the permitted records.
Right.
That's not a rotation, that's a permitted record. We give that from the planning department, we give it to the sheriff, we give it to DPS, and, and DPS calls theirs, and the sheriff calls theirs, you know, they put them on, on rotation.
Right.
And, and granted, what was it, three, four months ago, we upgraded the, the, the list? So everything should be now on accurate, because everyone that's on there should have paid.
Right now, it's separate.
And if they didn't pay, then they're wrong.
Maybe, maybe what I still happen to, because it's been going on for a long time, I don't know, maybe they need to go into some sort of a bidding system. If it is a good bidding, it can all work.
I see this, that's his talk.
If you've been going on for so long, this problem, it's going to a bidding system. If it was a cool, it was a good one, it was a good one.
I know, I'm, I'm a little complicated. Whatever you're gonna do, I just wanted, because he'd been telling me, he'd been, I said, look, they'll get on the Commissioner's Court, and you go and, and put your, your evidence or whatever you want to call it, your side of the story, and we'll take, we'll take your record.
So I'm, I'm trying to, to determine what is it that we need to fix, you know, and, and the way I understand, the list is now current, it's a.
The list is now current.
Okay, and now the rotation, the DPS calls theirs, you call yours, and that's how it's handled. I guess the, the only issue that we have now is DPS calls me for my wrecker, and, and then I get there, and the sheriff says, no, I'm going to drive it home.
We don't control DPS?
Yeah, that's, that's the thing, how, how can we fix that?
But in the meantime, the wrecker service is going to lose money.
We don't have any problem with that, if, if DPS just called us there, and the county needs, needs the vehicle near you, pound, just pays the toll, but don't drive the vehicle, let us.
When DPS calls us, and we take the vehicle, and they already have the wrecker, all we do is, you know what, we'll take him off our rotation and pay that toll, he's already, they already called him. Since he's already called, we'll just take him off our rotation and pay him that toll.
So he gets paid for that calling?
Yeah, since he was already called by DPS, we'll just take him off our rotation and pay him for that toll.
Okay, and he goes to the bottom?
Yeah.
But we're taking him out of rotation on your list?
On our list.
And what happened with the one from DPS, they don't put it back?
Like, for that, so we'll pay you our toll.
But you only go to the bottom, right? Not with, you only go to the bottom, right?
One thing they do is, if they're going to seize a vehicle, DPS will not call for a wrecker, call the county first, and, and the county can send the wrecker.
But, but we cannot give the DPS this rotation.
I understand.
Yeah, but, see, and, and again, we're using the rotation very loosely, when you say he's taken off the rotation, he's taken off from the top, but placed back on the bottom, but he's still in the rotation right?
No, he's still in the rotation.
Yeah, so, and, and you got paid, so, I mean, that's okay.
But you got paid even though you, you didn't tow it?
Yeah. That, that's.
No, no, if he already called, he'll tow it, and he'll get paid for it.
Out of the fifteen, Mr. Trevino, out of, you said fifteen?
Sixteen.
Sixteen. How many owners are those sixteen, only two or three? There are three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. Eighteen, nineteen, twenty, thirty.
The Ochoa, Ochoa, I, I, yo, the Triple J.
You have to sell that one, like, every time.
Rolle, Rivera, one or ten? One or ten, Daniel.
One better liquor.
See?
One, one various, but no one's there, liquor.
It's key, it's not familiar, like me, I have JJ Record Service LLC, and under that, I run Lopez Company and Jesse's Company, so three companies. And I make thirty-three thousand dollars a year, take home. You don't make a living with that. You can see the list there, what we pay for, for permits, for permits, only for the state, the permits, every company in record, and one record is four twenty-five, plus the one seventy-five that pay, we pay the county for the east side and for the west side.
I said, one wrecker for all.
Insurance, we pay fourteen, fifteen thousand dollars for insurance, a year. We're not making a living, that's only, we, we just want to make a living, we don't have nothing against nobody, but we just want to make a living, understand?
Yeah. Yeah, I, I, I completely understand, Pedro, see, and, and I don't want to sound cold or, or anything, Pedro, you know, the county, we're, we're, we're a business also, and we're trying to save money wherever we can. You know, it'd be like, I'll use an example, if I'm going to need some concrete, and I go to, to one vendor, he may say, I'll set it to you a hundred dollars a yard, and the next one says ninety, because I'm going to go with a ninety, and the hundred, the one that was charging a hundred goes under, am I to blame?
Yeah.
You know, I'm, I'm trying to save money, you know, and, and any business is the same, you know, when, when.
I don't think there's, there's not business just for sixteen vehicles.
That's, that's what it is?
No, no, I, 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 you know, it's a, you know, it's a, you know.
No, it's a.
Because, you know, you will be making a lot of money?
Hmm?
No.
No, it's a.
No, that's a party, that's a party. That's, that's the problem, no, that's, that's the problem, that's a bad repartee.
Exactly.
Okay, so, right, that's what's a matter, but, but.
Well, if, if, but, but they're here, you know, they're, they're.
They're still there, we can work with them, they're all, they will go down to this.
I was not there, since, we paid the permits when, in March, April, February.
Yeah, I'm.
Yeah, February. I was on the rotation until two weeks ago. I paid a thousand, thirty thousand of permits to county, and I was not on rotation on the east side, I don't know why. That was Ramirez told, the DPS, and DPS, if they use the same list of you all, I don't know why I was not.
Have you been called by the county to the east side?
Hmm? Now, yes.
But before?
I talked with Charlie, and they put me on rotation, how?
But before, were you called to, to the east side?
No. Muy poco, the west side, muy poco.
I mean, the west side.
Muy poco.
Well, all I can, I can say is, you, you need to get with the sheriff's department, and, and if you can, yeah, it's, it's public information. It's public information, you know, you can look at the rotation list, I have no reason to.
Yeah, I would like to have a rotation list.
As long as the planning department has the record gather and the permits in order, there's nothing we can do, there's nothing we can do.
Judge, excuse me, but, I mean, I wish you would have been prepared for this, because we also have issues with the wrecker companies, okay? I wish, I mean, I can't, I wish I would have been prepared for this.
Yeah, and I'm sorry, I should.
There's issues, Judge, when we have a burned vehicle, and the wrecker's on rotation, the wrecker doesn't want to go pick up the burned vehicle. Why? Because there, there's nothing compensated to the wrecker for that vehicle, okay? They don't want to go out for burned vehicles, they don't want to go out for vehicles that are stuck, okay? So what happens to that rotation? We have to put you back to the rotation, but then they say, well, you didn't call me, you didn't want to go pick up a burned vehicle, that was your case, and didn't want to go pick it up. We don't know when we're going to get a burned vehicle, we don't know when we're going to get a vehicle that's stuck. Now, in regards to the, the billing, they turn in tickets late, they're turning tickets in stacks, they're turning only one, they've been told, in order to get paid, that ticket has to have a case number, so we can verify it, okay? We're not going to pay if it doesn't have a case number, because we don't know where that vehicle went, who picked it up, on those initials, we don't know if it's to us or what. If we get a case number, we know, we go back, we can verify it and pay it, but some of these wrecker companies, they submit their, they submit copies, we've been asking for original, okay? We'll settle for the copy, but they'll turn in in stacks, they'll come in and turn in twenty, they don't want to turn in one, they'll turn in twenty, so they can get paid in big stacks. Our secretary, she does, she's very good with those books, regards to that check, I am not sure they can find out what happened to that check, because all checks are mailed back to the wrecker company, all checks, I'm not sure he can find out what happened to that check.
Well, if, if they don't want to pick up burned vehicles, or, or they don't want to pick up vehicles for that, get it by the rotation, you know, that. get it by the rotation, you know, that's. That would get out of.
And there's, there's, there's one particular record company, they made a record company. He towed, he towed our county vehicles for free. Anytime there's a, there's a damage to one of our vehicles, he towes it for free. And we don't, we do not put him, we don't favor him because he does our, our tolls. We don't favor him. He goes back to the regular rotation, okay? So I just wish, because there's a lot, there's a lot more that can be discussed in regards to the record records.
Well, why don't you all sit down and see what you all can come with?
I wish Mr. Lopez would have done that, I wish he would have done that, come and talk to me. Charlie's the major, okay? Charlie's the major, I'm the chief, okay? If he had a complaint, he could have come talk to me, we could have sat down to talk to him with Mr. Trevino. Because Mr. Trevino is very knowledgeable about the record system. And our record system, our rotation is based on what the planning gives us. And that's how we update our, our records. But I would really appreciate it if Mr. Lopez had an issue, come and talk to us. It could have been settled without having to come to the commissioner's court. And in regards to that check, same thing, if he would have come to me, we could have found that check.
Yeah, and, and, yeah, that's what I would recommend, that you all get together and talk about this. And then, if, if everything cannot be ironed out, then, then we can have a workshop.
Yeah.
And see what, what, you know, it, it might be that we cannot do anything. You know, but when, especially DPS.
Right.
You know, there's not much we can do. That, you know, that, that's, that's gonna be my recommendation, so.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure, if I cannot straighten it out, then we'll have to talk to the sheriff. But I am not sure I could, I could have straightened out all of these, these issues with the record. But like I said, if I cannot straighten it out, I'll already just contact the sheriff and he'll tell me exactly what, what can, can be done.
So there are persons that takes, takes a toll, because?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because, no, well, because they save them, because they save them. They save them, you're talking months. It's not only one week, okay, it's not only one week. There's not twenty tickets a day, do it every week. No, it's several past months.
So they're from last, last year?
Last month, two months, three months.
Okay, because I have, I have there six months since January to today, and I only have eight.
Well, I don't know about the wrong record rotation.
And I have three companies.
But like I said, if you have an issue, please come talk to me, you can straighten it out.
You have only one, one claim?
No, I have, I tell you, I have, I have, I have found the shirt. And there are eight, eight tickets only, and I have three companies.
Most of them, whatever goes through our income are abandoned vehicles. Are abandoned vehicles, and that's what, that's what we take, because that's what we're gonna see or compensate. Abandoned vehicle, that's what goes through our income.
By nothing, you got to.
No, no, I mean, I'm a good friend. I'm not a good friend. I didn't get me to fight, I didn't get me to.
No, no, no.
I'm like, you're mad, I don't have nothing against the, the third department, they're a prince of mind.
You can work it out.
Tell me. Yeah? Well, I told you last time, Judge, when they told me, you can charge a hundred dollars more? What did I tell you?
Yes.
Can I do it? Hmm?
I think you need to go, uh, take, work it out with Mr. Trevino.
Every situation that happens, every day, he's aware of everything that happens.
Well, it'll be great, it'll be.
Well, Judge, that's all, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Have a good day. Yes, sir, I'm going to, I will talk with Charlie. Yeah, I'm going to talk with Mr. Trevino, and what's your name?
Charlie's the major, this is the chief.
Larry.
With the mask. Whoa. Have a great day, thank you, sir.
Are you gonna have any action on that one, Ted, sir? Are you gonna have any action on it, or no?
No.
No, no. I don't think there's any. Let's go back to our agenda. And I thank you both for, for being here.
Yes, sir.
And I apologize, I should have called you earlier, but I slipped my mind.
Now the sheriff told me, but you're supposed to be commissioner's court, so we, I told it, I mean, if they would have been like this, we could have more information in regards to this, and you all could have been more aware of what happened with the, the record rotation.
Oh, and thank you, Ted.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Sergeant.
Cheers. Have a lovely day.
Yes, sir, can we get a excuse?
I have ten, wait a minute.
Can we get a excuse?
Yes, sir.
Let's go back to our agenda. Next thing we have are the minutes.
I just want to approve the minute, John.
Hang on, John.
Move the second to approve discussion. Only per please, I.
Aye.
Motion carries, uh, the vendor's list, Mr. Fisher.
Yes, sir, you also have a copy of the vendor's list, it's about pacing vendors.
Can I have a report, man?
Move the second, approve discussion. Only per please, I.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries, and the claims, Mr. Fisher.
Again, you should have a copy of the claims in front of you, they're gonna be here.
I'm only agreeing.
Move the second to approve discussion. Only per please, I. Oppose. Motion carries. Under reports, we should have them in our packet. If you all have any questions, I guess you all can ask more. You know what, and not to pick on you, Mr. Fisher, but yours is probably the one I, I look at the most. You want to go over that one? Do you have it?
I didn't bring it.
Well, that's, that's okay. You got it?
Is this one?
Yeah.
Do you want to give me this one?
Is there a particular area?
No, but I find it very useful, it's very important. It gives us a snapshot of.
We all don't have my summary, can I?
No, it's okay, if I have any questions, I'll call you.
Right on my desk, I can grab it.
Let's move on to item eight. This is, again, for the declaration of a local de sesstra. We pass this every, every once a month to keep up with the governor's as it goes change. And again, the, the reason for, for having it is that this allows us to, to funding under emergency management. I have motion there, second.
Second.
Move the second discussion. Only per please, I. Motion carries. Item nine is to approve a resolution for testing forensic evidence. It's a grant, it's, it's applying for a grant from the district attorney's office.
I don't know, yeah.
Move the second. Only per please, I. Oppose. Motion carries. Items ten through. Through, through fifteen are donations, payment credits. Are donations ten through fifteen.
One hundred dollars, one roach, four roach, three, three.
I do, I do.
That's a lot of paper.
And four hundred, ten, thirty.
The mayor?
Well, the one hundred, ten, two thirty, low four hundred.
Jose Manal, okay.
I would imagine.
I'll check it out and make sure.
You see, no, no, you see, that was.
I want to buy you some, yeah.
Uh, only per please, I. Oppose. Motion carries. Item sixteen and seventeen.
Fifteen, tambien. Ah, the donation.
Sixteen and seventeen, so, uh, credit, payment credits from Valley Telephone.
Same way, yeah.
Move the second discussion. Only per please, I.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Uh, item nineteen is to approve additional workers for the 2020 primary election. Apparently, some that we have approved declined because of COVID-19, so they're asking for additional personnel.
I'm moving, we approve the item, yeah.
Move the second discussion. Only per please, I.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Item twenty, is an action item to approve a new lease agreement between Advance, it's a Head Start program, and the county of Star. Do we have copies of that?
I don't know, is that in your packet?
Somebody else is gonna take over the Head Start program? Is it, is it the Abby, or no?
I guess wherever they.
Is it all the other?
Yeah, is it about?
To be there, it's, it's here, five here.
It's not. Okay, one, one of them, right, is the one they're asking for, is on seven, 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 north FM twenty-three sixty.
That's me.
Can you handle it?
That's the, that's the category.
Okay, that, that's the one they're asking for the lease.
Okay. That's the one.
Some of them.
Move the second discussion. Only per, you say, I. Oppose. Motion carries. Okay, item twenty-one, no action with me.
Twenty-two to thirty-five, the amendment.
Yeah, twenty-two to thirty-six are budget amendments, Mr. Fisher.
I guess those were all within their departments, and you recognize them too.
Budget amendment?
Yeah, is that, is that?
That's just an amendment, amendment within its department. Item thirty-seven is the correction. That I think you all maybe are going to.
Okay. See, the, the, I think what Commissioner Gash is asking about is that we had said that on, on the forfeitures, that we're not certain that all the money that's there should be there. That there might be monies there that are not forfeiture. For example, on the eight-liners, I don't know, you know, if, if it was things that he foreclosed or, or, the forfeitures from the eight-liners, then I guess it would be. But if it's money that he, they paid as fines or whatever, that's not forfeiture. And he not, he cannot be using that as forfeiture funds. So that's the reason, you know, we've been asking for, for that audit. Because, you know, if, if he spends it, then there's no way we can get it back into general fund. So, you know, and, and again, I don't want to speculate, but, but I, well, I just have this gut feeling. How, how much is a budget amendment for?
Well, wait, I'm sorry. Uh, thirty thousand, is that the correction? That's the amendment. And then from. Total transfer to conference thirty, and then to counter to general funds, thirty thousand, so, I guess.
Transfer to general fund?
Yes, the correction.
Okay, and, and I guess, I want to know, this is.
But those three employees that he wanted to hire, and he was negative?
The summer help.
Mm-hmm. But he was still negative in other line items, and I don't see him correcting those.
Right.
Yeah, so that, that, that's not gonna allow him, you know, because he's still negative in the salaries.
Mm-hmm. Unless he changed it from here, from then to now. If it's only that, it doesn't come in the rest.
I agree. In, in this case, we're just talking about an amendment within its department. That, that's in order, number twenty-two. I think that's what we're.
Yeah, but, but when we say it's a, an amendment within his department, it's an amendment within his department, but he's using monies that are not one hundred, or county budget. He's using money from some other forfeiture to move.
To one hundred.
Into the one hundred.
That, that's, again, item thirty-seven.
Oh.
The correction.
Okay, okay, so this one is okay?
Yes, this is just an amendment. Six sixty, six sixty zero zero, one thousand, six sixty one. Yeah, I believe this is the correction. Because we're going from the, I don't know, this is, this is in the same one, I see what you're saying. This is the amended, right?
Yeah, just, just saying, he's asking for it. You know, if I, if I can just go back for just a second for explanation. On the leasing, it also includes one on Uisachi Street.
That's the Trevino.
You know, on Morelos. And Roma Street, that's it. And that?
The Head Start.
The Head Start, yeah.
You can hear the, you can hear the, 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 the Rosita, is it, tambien?
Yeah, forty, forty-one ninety, West US eighty-three.
It's the Rosita.
Yeah, I'm in the key.
It is for all.
Yeah.
Then, that's a bunch of all, yeah, all.
Yeah. It's a little, a little bit, a little bit, a little bit, Rosita and Roma. Right. You want to?
That's what, that's what was in the back. This is the, this is the front page, and then, this is a bag, agriculture, constable. Desk department. Transportation.
Yeah, he's moving thirty thousand from crime prevention to general fund.
That's what, that's what I have.
That, that's the only money he has?
Yes, that's all. I just asked to let you bring me the, the amendment.
Okay.
Will the water can remove some preparation to salary?
Say what?
Some preparation to salary?
No, from, no, from secretary, no, from assistance to secretaries.
The law will from preparation to one hundred?
Almost.
Yeah, see, Pedro, this one, I guess, is what, what I said, we cannot use, he, they cannot move money other than for, for, it's gotta be law enforcement. However, they can say, well, as a good, I use them to, to do record keeping or whatever for law enforcement. So.
On the forfeiture funds.
On the forfeitures, yeah. Yeah, well, and, and this is what Victor is trying to do, move. uh, from the forfeiture, which is the eight-liners into salaries for summer.
Eh, eso que está presentando Victor, donde dice ahí, que son treinta fondos de los, de los crime prevention, o de los DWI, te, de los que cobran, pero está DWI, you know, you know.
See, and that's where, where I have a question, whether it is or is going to the, to, to general fund. And, and no one has been able to answer that.
He hasn't replied, can I?
Okay. Okay. Okay, let, let's, uh, what is it? That, we can, we can approve all the, the others and, and what you can do here.
Okay.
But you got another motion?
Yeah, we have a motion.
No, I have a motion.
Is there a motion to approve twenty-three through thirty-six?
Twenty-three to what?
So, yes, eh, bueno, esta, eh, esta, eh, esta, eh, esta, eh, esta.
Oh, Humberto.
Ah, so, what?
Yeah, bueno, es de esa motion or, la manera. Let me see, you have a list of, of the, of the. Personal, like, if you think of hires, what, eh, personnel?
Or, this upcoming, uh.
Yeah, can I see it, yeah.
Colorita, no, I don't.
No, colorita, vitarita, no, let me see something. It's not all the month? Okay, well, that's fine.
Yeah, no, no, I didn't put it in.
Okay.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve item twenty-three through thirty-six.
I don't know, yeah.
Okay, motion and second. Uh, discussion. Oliver, please, I.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries.
Are we holding off until two?
Yes, until Javier. Uh, in twenty-seven, time, we do.
Thirty-seven, time. Thirty-seven, can?
We probably, I'm getting that.
He has thirty, eh, he is in forfeiture fund, yeah, and thirty is twenty-two.
Yes, it's.
What's that?
We're, we're, we're holding off on that.
Okay.
Twenty-two and thirty-seven, I think I have.
All of it, Victor, no, no.
And, and seven, like. You know, no, so, it's.
El troque que quiera robar, yo lo tienes tú.
No.
Nos vamos a dar cuenta, eh, ya hemos dado un desastre este.
Mira, yo para que lo quiero, yo, yo no uso un cabrero, bueno, por una cosa, no, eh, no, eh, no, eh.
El troque, nadie, todo tu.
Eh?
No, me entiende la pasta, Robert, eh, sí.
Pues, es que.
Eh, you, you, eres malo.
Yeah.
Eres malo.
No, 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 yo no pienso en lo que es correcto. Y no me gusta andar corriendo las cosas como, somewhere I'm not here, me entiendes? Me entiendes? Es la parada con la chuparosa de Florin, Florin.
De Florin, no? En finas.
Ah, yo le hablo a la Rosita aquí. Yo no le amo, yo soy, yo soy, yo, ni a Víctor ni a Chuparosa.
Chuparosa. Killer bee.
A Luis, you're the killer, Chuparosa.
Es blanco, es roja.
Eh?
El color es blanco, está muy bueno.
No, no sé qué será. Yo, yo no la he visto, ni mi interés es ahí.
Oh, come on.
Okay. Okay, back to, uh, twenty-two, I see the, the confusion because it says transfer to general funds, but that is not transferring to the general funds, that's the line item name within his eight-liner.
And he's not transferring money to the general fund?
No. Okay. It's the line item called transfer to general funds.
That's where the judge wants to know, if that money that he's transferring there belongs to the general fund before he gets to there.
So he, he's amending his budget, the eight-liner forfeiture.
Right, and he's moving it within his eight-liner forfeiture account from a line item called transfer to crime prevention to transfer to general fund.
Very, that going, going to general fund, he's going to the same budget.
Amendment. Not in the amendment. Now, when he does transfer, then it does go to the general fund, in the correction.
Because right now, it's going, it's gonna say transfer to general fund, and then he needs to correct his, uh, his, uh, his, like, fund, I guess, his department. The department within the general fund, that's the one he's correcting.
So he wants to move this money into, into that line item within the, uh, the eight-liner forfeiture account.
Yes.
Which the line item says transfer to general.
Yes.
Once he gets that money in there, then he's going to want to move that money to general fund.
Yes, under his department.
Under his department, probably salaries, right?
Yes.
And that's the correction.
Yes.
Okay, but then general fund, the general fund, sacado, maya.
Si, lo, lo, lo quiere mover, si, the, the forfeiture count, he's got different line items, uno is transfer to general. Le ponen el ahí, y lo de ahí, he can transfer to general. So once he has it in transfer to general, then the next one, he moves it from, from there to general, uh, a, a general fund. Once it's in the general fund within his department, he can do whatever he wants. Porque that is within his department, in general.
In the general fund.
Yeah. Él puede usarlo pa salario, él puede usarlo pa comprar un carro, él puede usarlo, whatever he wants.
But from eight-liner to the, the journey to the general fund, it has to be a correction.
Lo está haciendo bien as far as, uh, the process. The question still remains is whether this money that is moving
Right.
From the eight-liners, uh, if, if, if they were all eight-liners, then I guess we have no say in this forfeiture account.
Yeah, that, that part of it, you know, we can't tell from this information.
See, then the other question is what, uh, Mr. Ramírez just mentioned. Uh, if he's moving this money to salaries for summer students, how are they helping law enforcement? If, if, if it's a forfeiture account, I think he would follow the same rules as, uh, chapter fifty-nine.
Right.
And it's got to be law enforcement. So how are this, the young people that he's going to hire, going to help for law enforcement?
I don't know. I mean, I don't know if he's gonna have them put out flyers, I don't know what he's gonna have to, uh, and with COVID nineteen, what's next?
Exactly.
Yeah. I, I can't, I can't answer that question, uh, I mean, all I can tell you is that as far as item twenty-two and item thirty-seven, he has done correctly. Which is what we're looking at.
They stable it and, and ask him to come in here, yeah?
I mean, that's a whole other issue not pertaining to whether or not.
Yeah, I, I think we can look at and approve, uh, item twenty-two. Because he's moving that within his own department. Now, once he moves it to general, he wants to move it into salary, then we can question that. Can we? But that, well, no, no.
If he gets, it's done correctly, what he's gonna do with it, I, I have no idea.
Yeah, the, the process is correct, it's the moving money that, that is, should be in that line item is what we don't know.
Right. I'm not sure we have any way of knowing that.
Let's just not approve the summer company.
Well, that's gonna be in order of salaries.
Yeah, yeah, right under order of salaries.
Uh, you know, saying that, uh, when, when you get to that, you're gonna see that he's still negative.
Yeah, you know, and, and that's, that's another issue, you know, he's, he's working, uh, fifty percent of his workload, I mean, staff. Why should we be hiring more people? You know, have them at home.
Thank you.
As hard as, uh, it is for me to say, this really doesn't make any sense.
It doesn't make any sense, yeah?
It doesn't make any, well, I've defended Victor all my life, you know that, that doesn't make any sense.
I hired, I hired some summer help, and I know we both are red happy, but mine were because I needed to do an inventory, and they're working at nights on the streetlights, you know, I, I need to get a handle on that, because we're paying money
But not.
To entities that, that are not ours, the cities, we're paying for their streetlights. On it, then I hired another young man, then he's the one helping us at the COVID nineteen, but he didn't pay out of COVID. They're the ones who are string when, when they go to get tested. Uh, so, I mean, they're working, they're not at home. But, uh, well, let's see.
If we're not a hu, a hundred percent, if we're hiring summer help, it doesn't make any sense for anybody.
I don't have that doctor.
And, uh, well, I guess, I guess we can approve it, and then we'll, we'll, uh, have another shot at it when it's presented under order of salaries.
I move it to two, yeah?
Thank you.
Okay, that, that.
And then, oh, oh, see, we're talking about twenty-two.
Twenty-two, done.
So you're, you're talking about twenty-two to thirty-six in this case?
Yes.
Well, see.
The others, we, we already made a motion to approve those. Uh, and with the exception of nine, twenty-seven. Well, no, 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 we approved all of them, all of them, yeah. Okay.
Are you approving twenty-two and thirty-seven?
Uh, no, no, twenty-two, no matter. Uh, because it's a correction. And, and thirty-seven, that's a.
Can you go with the vote, Chris?
I'm sorry?
Can you go with the vote?
Uh, okay, I have a motion, second, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Oliver, please, I.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries, this is item thirty-seven. Uh, this is a budget correction. Again, from Mr. Canales, and this budget correction is for what, Mr. Perez?
Uh, just real quick, just to clarify, that is twenty-two to thirty-six have all been.
They had already been approved.
The others have.
Yeah, we're, we're now just doing twenty-two and thirty-seven.
Yeah.
Yeah, thirty-seven.
So thirty-seven, uh, there, we're looking at the budget correction, which is going from, uh, from his account, uh, the eight-liner account to the, um, or the general fund, fund attorney account.
You know, that's in order. Yeah, I, I don't have a, an issue with that.
No, no, no. Take a vote, John.
Motion and second discussion. Oliver, please, I.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Okay, let, let's go back to the reports, how do you want it?
Que eran los de mí. Que eran los de mí, la probada, eh.
Hey, hey, say no, for the, for the, you can't.
No, pero estamos, eh, no, we almost clarified, que ese, eh, they, 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 they said crime prevention, but they did on on the box, so we're next. We are not sure, eh?
I can go back?
No, no, you must, eh, 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 eh.
Do you all want to go back?
Yeah.
And you say that? Okay, let's, let's go, let's go back to item, uh, uh, twenty three, thirty three. Well, uh, Humberto. Item twenty two. Who, who made the motion?
Commissioner, I'll debate the motion, Commissioner signs second.
Okay, do you want to rescind the motion?
Yes, sure, I will rescind the motion.
Okay, okay, so let's go back to item two, twenty two and continue discussing.
There's a, there's a, I agree to rescind the motion because we need to end this fight thoroughly.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to table it until we can determine or audit and find out that the monies that are there are actually, should be there and not part of the general, uh, fund line item. Is there a second? Discussion? Honitor, please, I.
I.
Opposed, motion carries, item thirty seven, we also moved on that.
Yes, sir, Commissioner signs, uh, moved, and Commissioner out of his second.
Do you want to rescind your motion, please?
Thirty seven?
Yes.
Okay, you rescind the second, okay, so we're, we're bringing back to the table uh, to discuss, and this is to approve a request to correct the budget on the county attorney's budget. I guess, if it's what the court wants, you know, I'll, I'll entertain a motion to table item thirty seven until we get some more clarification on it. Move the second discussion. Honitor, please, I.
Right.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, uh, Mr. Perez, you know, and, and maybe I could have ripped at it without. But you don't think through your report?
I'll just brief you.
Sure.
Okay, so you should have a copy of my report in front of you. This is the report for the month of June twenty twenty. You see on page one, part one reflects the reconciled balances for the general fund at three million five hundred ninety six thousand eight hundred ninety five with forty four cents. Road and Bridge Fund was seven hundred and forty thousand seven ninety seven and thirty seven cents. And the payroll planning fund at one million sixty one thousand five hundred and fifty two with twenty seven cents. Uh, part two reflects the expenditure report for the general fund as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty. As a percent of the year elapsed, and that is two hundred and seventy four days have elapsed for seventy four point eighty seven percent of the year. In summary, the general fund amount expended here to date is thirteen million two hundred and sixteen thousand nine hundred and seventy two or sixty nine point sixty four percent, which is slightly below the seventy four eighty seven. Breakdown, several departments are reflected at the bottom of page one and continue through page two. The departments exceeding the seventy four point eighty seven percent are reflected in bold. On page three, part three reflects the expenditure report for the Road and Bridge Fund as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty. In summary, Road and Bridge Fund amount expended here to date is four million twenty six thousand one hundred and three dollars or sixty four point seventy one percent, which also falls below the seventy four point eighty seven percent for the year elapsed. Below that, you can see a breakdown of the numbers for some of the departments within the Road and Bridge Consolidated Fund. The remainder of page three, uh, page three and continue through page four. We have the year-to-date summary of the bridge revenue reports for the general fund and the Road and Bridge Fund. Uh, year-to-date revenues collected are fourteen million four ninety one nine hundred and forty six dollars or seven six point thirty six percent, and five hundred, I mean, five million three hundred and seventy nine thousand nine eighty three or eighty six point forty eight percent respectively. Page five reflects a summary of the revenues and expenses for the enterprise funds. Again, as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty. International Bridge had revenues of one million five hundred and forty thousand eight sixteen with expenditures of one million four hundred and ninety seven thousand four oh one, that is an excess of forty three thousand four hundred and fifteen dollars. The gas operating system reflects year-to-date revenues of seven hundred and seventy eight thousand eight hundred and fifty four dollars with expenditures of five hundred and fifty five thousand seven hundred and twelve dollars, that's an excess of two hundred and twenty three thousand one point two. And finally, the solid waste transfer station reflects revenues of one million two thousand eight hundred and forty five dollars with expenditures of nine hundred and ninety five thousand four thirty seven which reflects an excess of seven thousand four hundred and eight dollars. And lastly, page six has a, a summary of the debt owed as of June thirtieth. The total, total current balance is one million two hundred and ninety six thousand five hundred and four dollars.
Mr. Perez, on the, uh, participation to Roma, on page six and bottom of page six, this, uh, this is all we owe?
Right.
So the million dollars that we owe has been pretty much taken care of?
That, we have one more payment to do there, and then, of course, once we do the audit for year ending nineteen, there's gonna be some adjustments there.
Okay, but, but I think currently we pay City of Roma thirty some thousand a month, or something like that.
I think it's, uh, it's governed at fifty three maybe, or sixty? But I think that, uh, the total debt, uh, subject to change, because I guess the, the, the financials, their financials just came in.
Okay, what, what, what I'm trying to, to determine is, yeah, sixty two thousand five hundred is what we're paying one. So, so we owe the one, one more payment?
Yes.
Okay, and, and that would be the month of, uh, August?
I think so.
So September, we're gonna be, they're gonna owe us, if we continue paying at that rate, they're gonna owe us sixty thousand.
And it just depends on the calculation that the financials come out with. The new financials are gonna show how much for the new year.
Well, if anything, they're gonna owe us even more, because this year the bridge is, I mean, doesn't really afford it. So we're, we're overpaying, so chances are that they're gonna owe us.
So this is the last payment, the Roma?
Yes.
You need the last payment, you, you can't stop paying?
No, because I think we, that's an automatic monthly payment that we pay.
But then you go into whatever is.
Yeah, then they owe us. Yeah, and, and when they owe us, then now, next year, I can lower the participation with them.
Okay.
Uh, and, and we need it, because this, this coming budget's gonna be.
Yeah.
You know, I've already started structuring it, and, and it looks like we're about half a million in the red.
I guess payment is based on an estimate that you make for the year.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, however, this year, because, because we owed him, and I wanted to catch up.
Yeah.
Instead of paying a thirty five percent, I had budgeted fifty percent. Fifty percent, instead of us getting sixty five, we would pay off on our debt. But then the bridge started to go down the revenue, so we were actually paying that seventy percent of what came in, and that's the reason we paid it off.
So the financials should show that we both paid.
Yeah, the financials should, should look good this year. Or whenever they budget, I mean, audit.
Because these are just based on the estimated.
Right. Okay.
Any other questions?
No, sure.
Thank you. Okay, it is eleven thirty, and pursuant, pursuant to section five five one point oh seven four, we'll go into executive session to discuss order of salaries, uh, possible action on proposal for major medical care content. Also, to discuss possible action on agent broker of record for supplement program, insurance program, and the ASO bidding claims. Back in open session, under executive session, uh, order of salaries, is there a motion?
There's a motion.
There's a motion, a second, we will present it. Uh, discussion, Honitor, please, I.
Right.
Opposed, motion carries, the other thing, and I guess we can take both of them, is the major medical health dental vision, life insurance, and also, uh, to go out for proposals for an agent broker record for the supplemental insurance, is there a motion to? Move the second, discussion, Honitor, please, I. Motion carries, and then the ASO, that was just informational, no action needed on that. Is there a motion to adjourn? Move the second, discussion, Honitor, please, I. Motion carries.